We'll now call this meeting of the Jacksonville City Council to order. I want to welcome everyone who's in attendance tonight, and also those that are viewing the meeting on G-10 television. We're going to begin the meeting tonight. I'm going to have you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Jerome Willingham, followed by the invocation by our city attorney, Mr. John Carter. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father.
As always, we give thanks for your presence in our lives and for your blessings upon our city and upon our citizens. We pray that we may never take for granted all the blessings that you so graciously bestow upon us, but rather that we acknowledge them and use them in service to you and in service to our fellow citizens. We pray this evening for our service members serving here and around the world, and we also espouse to remember those wounded warriors who have served and are still carrying those wounds today. We pray for all of their families. We pray for our mayor and for our council, that your guidance and direction, as always, would be with them. All of this we ask in your holy name. Amen.
Amen. Council, you have at your places a copy of the agenda for tonight's meeting. There's going to be a couple of amendments to this agenda. We're going to take a couple of presentations, A and B, and move them to the March 3 meeting due to the weather situation we're having now. And with that, I would entertain a motion to adopt the amended agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Next, we have, excuse me, we have our first section, we have our first presentation for tonight, and we're going to do some promotions, and I'm going to come around front here. I'm going to ask Chief Spencer Lee and Chief Inar if you want to join me up front. And also Jerry, I saw Jerry, there he is, okay. Operation Chief Jerry Hardison. And we're going to, y'all going, we're going to promote three people, we're going to swear in three people tonight, right? I think I'm going to start here with Ethan Wooton and his family. I know you might have some of your folks here that will join, will join you up front. Ethan, how are you doing? I'll let you, I'll let you and your wife come over here, that way you can face us all this way. How's that? You ready for this? Okay. Ethan began his career with the Jacksonville Fire and Emergency Services on July 6, 2010, as a firefighter trainee. After promotion through the ranks of firefighter one and two, he was promoted to driver one in January of 2013. Ethan holds certifications in firefighter one and two, EMT, hazmat level one, inspector level one, EVD, driver operator pumps, driver operator aerial, and TRVMR. That may mean something to somebody, they could interpret that for me. He is a student in the Fire Protection Technology Program at Coastal Carolina Community College, and he's also scheduled to graduate in the spring of 2016. And I, I'm going to administer the oath, and if you would place your, left hand on the Bible, raise your right hand, and repeat after me. I, Ethan Wooton.
Aye, Ethan Wooton.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will be alert and vigilant.
Alert and vigilant.
In performing my duties.
Performing my duties.
As a driver two.
Driver two.
Of the City of Jacksonville Fire and Emergency Services.
City of Jacksonville Fire and Emergency Services.
That I will not be influenced in any matter.
Not be influenced by any matter.
On account of personal bias or prejudice.
On account of personal bias or prejudice.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and execute.
Discharge and execute.
The duties of my office.
Duties of my office.
As a driver two.
As a driver two.
Of the City of Jacksonville Fire and Emergency Services.
Of the City of Jacksonville Fire and Emergency Services.
According to the best of my skill.
According to the best of my skill.
Abilities.
Abilities.
And judgment.
And judgment.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thomas Ticken, you guys are the EMTs, just in case you do. Congratulations, Ethan.
Next, I'm very proud to call on Jeremy Foster. And anyone you want to bring forward with you?
Hey, Jeremy? Yeah, I'm going to come over here. How are you doing?
Jeremy, Jeremy began his public safety career with the Jacksonville Fire and Emergency Services on July 24, 2000, as a firefighter trainee. He was promoted through the ranks of firefighter one and two, and was promoted to driver one in August of 2004, and driver operator in December of 2007. Jeremy holds certifications as firefighter one and two, EMT, hazmat level one, instructor level two, fire inspector one, TRVMR, again, TR ropes, TR water rescue, EVD, driver operator pumps, driver operator aerial, USAR, fire officer two, chief 101, fire and life safety educator one, and rescue officer. He is a qualified instructor in firefighter one and two, driver operator hazmat and technical rescue. He holds an associate's degree from Coastal Carolina Community College in fire protection technology. And Jeremy is going to be promoted, has been promoted to driver, from driver two to captain. So he's going to be sworn in as a captain tonight. So if you'll place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right, and repeat after me. I, Jeremy Foster.
I, Jeremy Foster.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will be alert and vigilant.
Be alert and vigilant.
In performing my duties.
In performing my duties.
As a captain.
As a captain.
Of the City of Jacksonville.
Of the City of Jacksonville.
Fire and Emergency Services.
Fire and Emergency Services.
That I will not be influenced.
That I will not be influenced.
In any matter.
In any matter.
On account.
On account.
Of personal bias or prejudice.
Of personal bias or prejudice.
That I will support and maintain.
I will support and maintain.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And Constitution.
And laws of North Carolina.
And laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully.
I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge and execute.
Discharge and execute.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As captain.
As captain.
Of the City of Jacksonville.
The City of Jacksonville.
Fire and Emergency Services.
Fire and Emergency Services.
According to the best of my skill.
According to the best of my skill.
Abilities.
Abilities.
And judgment.
And judgment.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Ethan.
Is that your new 800 megahertz we just turned?
Yep.
Thank you. Sir, we'll visit that white shirt if he gets stuck. He looked like he knew what he was doing there. Congratulations, Jeremy.
Okay, our last, our last promotion to be sworn in tonight will be Amy Prokopio. And I see you have most of your family, your family with you tonight.
I do, but Amy's not there.
Okay. How are you doing, Amy? Good to see you. Amy began her career with the Jacksonville Fire and Emergency Services on February 14, 2000, as a firefighter trainee. Working her way up through firefighter one, two, and three ranks, she was promoted to driver operator one in November of 2003. This was followed by promotions to driver two in December 2005, and captain in December of 2009. She was promoted to her current rank of platoon training officer in March of 2012. She holds certifications as a firefighter one and two, EMT, hazmat level one, general instructor two, fire inspector level one, TR surface water rescue, fire and life safety educator one and two, EVD, driver operator aerials, TRVMR, chief 101, fire officer one. She also holds an associate's degree in fire protection technology from Coastal Carolina Community College, and a bachelor's degree in fire and emergency services from Fayetteville State University. She is a member of the honor guard and the accreditation team, and has been the water rescue team leader for three years. She and her husband, Mario, are the parents of three, one's out there, here, but not here, Thomas, are you Thomas? Molly, are you Molly? Nice to meet you. And Isabella, who's not in here. But we're going to administer the oath now, and I'm going to have you place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand and repeat after me. Amy. I, Amy Prokopio.
I, Amy Prokopio.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will be alert and vigilant.
That I will be alert and vigilant.
In performing my duties.
In performing my duties.
As battalion chief.
As battalion chief.
Of the City of Jacksonville Fire and Emergency Services.
Of the City of Jacksonville Fire and Emergency Services.
That I will not be influenced in any matter.
That I will not be influenced in any matter.
On account of personal bias or prejudice.
On account of personal bias or prejudice.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and execute.
Discharge and execute.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As battalion chief.
As battalion chief.
Of the City of Jacksonville Fire and Emergency Services.
Of the City of Jacksonville Fire and Emergency Services.
According to the best of my skill, abilities, and judgment.
According to the best of my skills, abilities, and judgment.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Amy. Chief Lee informs me that you are the first female firefighter to hold the position as battalion chief.
That's right.
Congratulations on that event also.
Thank you.
I bet you're proud of your mom, aren't you? Yeah. Thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
Good to see you, Lisa.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did y'all want to stay here?
It always does my heart good to see, see these promotions, especially with people that are so deserving. Now, they went through a grueling process, and I think they probably tell you that, in order to get to the place where they're at now, and we're real proud of them and the work that they do, because over the last couple of years, they've been really instrumental, these three, in, in making the department a much better place to work, and making our citizens safer, so thank you for that.
Thank you, Chief.
Thanks, lady. Appreciate it, guys.
Okay, we have our first section of public comment for the evening. I have one person signed up, Randy Gorham. If you'll come forward, please, to the podium. State your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Randy Lee Gorham, 1124, 6th and Planet Green Road. I've been having a problem with Paul Hardison for the longest, and Mayor Phillips. I've been trying to get a report that he's threatened me years ago, so I had a vest made up here that showed 2013 to Mayor Phillips, and I got it on again tonight, and then something just happened again, February 25, last year, and I've been trying to get a police report from your police department, Mayor Phillips. I could never get a report. Went down there four or five times, and got up to Deputy Trade, and kept talking to him. Third time I talked to him, he fussed me, my girlfriend, out. Said, "Look, I checked into it, and done all I can do, nothing to do about it." I asked to speak to Turn Affairs, he denied me talking to Turn Affairs about the situation. And then I got ready to talk to the chief of police, I could never talk to the chief. And finally, October, the chief called me back when I contacted Mr. Woodrow, and I guess he might have called him and told me to come back down and make a report. And we never scared to go back down, because Deputy Chief Trade treated us that day. And I'd like to know now whether I turn to Mayor Phillips to get a report. I can't never get a report done, so I'll come to you again. You told me 2013 that you will speak to me. You haven't spoken to me yet. I've been trying to get a touch from Mayor Phillips. You never returned my call back, and set me meeting.
So this incident.
When, Mr. Gorham?
February of last year. And I didn't know where do I turn to for help.
Okay.
It happened to your city, and I was threatened by Joe Hardison in the courthouse. It cussed me out in the courthouse, ran my face, six inches from my face. I said that 2013. Nobody never done nothing about it. Came to police department again. Now he done sawled me in the store, in Dollar Tree. I have a report here, which again, they will get your police department, because they want to take a report, because it's scared of Joe Hardison, some other reason. I don't know what it is. So now I'm coming to talk to you, so you can take my report, sir. So when I come meet with you, so you take my report.
I don't, I don't take reports.
But who the hell will take my report?
We can.
Mr. Hardison called me yesterday, I called him back six times over a three-hour period, was not able to make contact with him. For that, I'm certainly, I'm sorry, Mr. Gorham, I apologize for the fact you and I did not make contact. It is my understanding that the chief of police has talked to you about the fact that they could not find a report filed. Be happy to discuss with, with you this out in the council chamber, out in the forum of the, of the auditorium, if you'd like, in just a moment.
I, I think what Mr. Gorham is saying, that there never was a, you never were able to file a report, is that correct?
No, they would never take one.
Okay.
That's why the chief couldn't ever find one. I had to speak to the chief. Since he's come back from vacation, they keep telling me he's not in, he's not in, and they would turn my phone off about three weeks ago.
We'll be happy to meet with him.
Have, have somebody from staff to talk with Mr. Gorham outside. Thank you, Mr. Gorham. Okay, this time, I'm going to pause. I know somebody came specifically for the presentations tonight, so now's your chance to run away, and go home to your nice, warm home, and leave us here to do the city's, the rest of the city's business for the night. Thank you all for coming, and congratulations again to those of you who were promoted tonight. It's, it's really a thrilling, a thrilling event to be able to see you guys move, and gals move up in the organization. Thank you.
John, how are you? Hey, John, how are you?
Let's make some law.
These Carmen didn't deserve it.
She was hanging in there with us.
She doesn't have a choice.
All right, let's, let's go ahead and go back into session with our business here. And this time, I would entertain a motion to adopt the consent items in the minutes from the January 20, 2015, February 3, 2015, special meetings, and the February 3, 2015, regular meeting.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. That brings us down to our item number four, and this is going to be a reappointment, a planning advisory board reappointment, and I'm going to have to bring my screen back up here again. In this, we have, the planning board consists of nine authorized members, eight from the city, one from ETJ, three of the members, or three of the city appointments, excuse me, are reserved for a representative from each of the following advisory committees: environmental, and appearance, and recreation, and parks, and water, and sewer. We have, how many openings were? Just the one?
Yes.
Okay, just one opening for appointment, and from what committee was that from?
Environmental and appearance.
Environmental and appearance.
We actually have two. We have, one of them's in ETJ, one appointment on the county.
Right, okay. So we're going to, we're going to make one appointment tonight, and at this time, I will defer to council member Bob Warden, since he is the liaison to the planning board to recommend any nominations.
I recommend and nominate Suzanne Nelson for a reappointment for a term expiring June 30 of this year, for, and also to represent the environmental appearance committee.
Any other nominations?
Mayor Phillips, I move that the nominations be closed and the nominee accepted by acclamation.
A second.
No, we have a second. Second, second. He kind of, okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any, any discussion? Here and now, and all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Next item, we have board of adjustment appointment. This is one vacancy on the board of adjustment, and due to the passing of Mr. Herb DeWasser, who has served a long time on the board. Councilmember Jerry Bitner is the liaison to the board of adjustment, and I will defer to you now, Mr. Bitner, for a nomination. and I would defer to you now, Mr. Bitner, for an nomination.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I know our thoughts and prayers go out to the DeWasser family for his overall community service, as well as serving on the Board of Adjustment. I would like to appoint, to fulfill the term which will expire June 30, 2015, Ms. Ursula Kuno Buckner.
Now, is there, okay, so that's the only nominee?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay. All right, does anybody have any other nominations?
Move that nominations be closed and that the nominee be appointed by acclamation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the motion carries. Ms. Kuno Buckner is the new appointed member. All right, that brings us to our last section of public comment for the evening. Does anyone want to speak that may not have signed the sheet? Okay, I don't see anybody with their hand up. So now, I will go to the report section, and I think I'll start with Mr. Willingham.
No report.
Mr. Bitner?
Just the fact that the unwas of meeting scheduled for Thursday has been canceled due to the weather. That's it.
Mayor Potemlazar?
No, no report.
Ms. Washington?
No, sir.
Mr. Thomas?
No report, thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Warden?
Proud to be here, but no report.
I'm, I'm proud that you're here, happy that you're here. Dr. Woodruff, your, your report, sir.
Mayor members of council, due to weather tomorrow, we're going to run an abbreviated schedule relative to the recreation before-school program at New Bridge Middle and Carolina Forest. We will begin that program at 7:30 a.m. We will still run the after-school program as normal. Also, the city had scheduled a nonprofit's executive roundtable that was going to be at Coastal Carolina Community College at noon. That has been canceled as a result of the key speaker not being able to travel from Raleigh. Beyond that, I would like to report that the chief did meet as requested with Mr. Gorham. That matter is being taken care of. As always, we appreciate the leadership you and the council are providing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Carter?
City attorney has given me legal advice that I have. Today, we did convert over to the 800-megahertz system. We have several pictures that we'd like to show you of that. This system is a joint effort of the city council and the county commission. It is something that will benefit all of the citizens of Angelo County, and we are very appreciative of the cooperation that the county commission and the city council have had in this roughly $13 million investment. It will enable all security personnel, whether they're firefighters, whether they're military, police, or whether they're police officers, sheriff's deputies, to better communicate throughout the entire city. With that, we will skip the videos that were scheduled, and we will turn it back over to the city attorney.
Following council's lead, no report.
Didn't mean to cut you off, I thought you hit a pause there. We're done. Okay, with that, council, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.